All right, call to order, the regular scheduled meeting of school board. First item of business is the rule of the public hearing minutes, it's number 14.
I make a motion to approve the public hearing minutes.
Thank you, continue, thank you, Joe. Any further comment on that?
No.
And that was the public hearing on the expenditure of funds for the water bottle and water bottle fillers and the water. All those papers, if I understand right?
Aye.
All right, close, exceptions, motion carries. And next up is approval of minutes, the regular board minutes.
Make the motion to approve the regular minutes of 14.
Thank you, Joe. Discussion on that.
Yeah.
And there's favorable approval of those minutes, if I understand right?
Aye.
Close, exceptions, motion carries, and correspondence.
No correspondence.
Business administrative reports.
Okay. So first of all, the manifest are there, and also I have the end of year, really 25 of this, 25 of this. It has to go to state. I'll do a full recap at the next meeting, we have some stuff for tonight. Just add a couple things, so there was a community question back in August 24. So we wanted to respond to the board first and do this and send the information off to the question, but there was a question regarding, what is the final year over year budget increase now that the budget is complete? It was 1. something before amendments, and I calculate about 5.1% as the final version, not including S R funds. Also, what is the increase including S R funds? So, the original general fund operating budget increase of the 22, 23 budget versus 21, 22 was originally 1.2%. And that didn't include any warrant articles, which once they're approved and passed at the annual meeting, they get rolled up into the budget. Depending on where they pick, some of them were capital items, some of them were trust fund items. So, the additional warrant articles, the warrant article number six, support staff CBA was $30,000. So once again, that's approved by the voters again, rolled up into your regular operating budget. And so with that rolled up and included in the operating budget, the total increase of the prior year over the prior years, total 1.6%. I think this was his question. There was another warrant article regarding the flooring, 140,000, that's kind of in our capital budget section of the big spreadsheet. And compared to the prior year capital project with the roofers, it was like 154,000, the flooring was 140,000. So it really didn't have an increase in that total percent when you're looking for me every year. And then the last, besides all of our other warrant articles are trust funds that are funded from any surplus, so those, and we have to say it every year, so there's no change from year to year on those. But the last one that we did, the warrant article number 10, special ed trust fund deposit, this was a one-time deposit, not from surplus, voted to be added into the special ed trust fund. And the impact, we could have put it in the budget as a line item, but we decided we're going to move that money into the trust fund. And so the impact of that was included in the regular budget is 1.3% increase. So I think this was his question, what was the total increase after everything was all said and done? And this went into a trust fund and not part of the regular operating budget. The question on the S R funds.
Sorry, that's 1.3.
1.3, that's 100,000.
Year over year.
Yes, because we didn't do it in the prior year, yeah. But we will probably do it next. So, yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, this document would just pass out, so I'll back straight. There was a question about the S R, I wasn't really sure, but I think the thing with the S R was, the S R funds, like any other grant funds, first of all, that doesn't have an impact on our tax rate, because it's the grant funds. But it has an impact on our cost per pupil, so when we look at the total money spent by the district, including regular operating funds and any grant funds, I think that's, but we haven't spent those funds, so there really hasn't been any impact. It was squished, that took a little bit last year, but the big piece of the S R funds, high school H VAC, that will be like, next year, we actually spend those funds. But anyway, the changes in the grants, we, every year we have changed some grants from year to year. So I'm not really sure what he was asking about that, but it does impact our cost per pupil analysis, and we had talked about that. We're going to have, and every district has talked about that, we're going to have like an increase in our cost per pupil, because we got all this funding. But on the back of that sheet, was just our breakdown of the S R. This has reminded, we talked a little bit about the high school H VAC tonight, and Brian will talk about that later. Anyway, that was, that was in response to that question, I think Mrs. Prebenow, that answered the rest of those questions back when that was presented. There was other, one other comment.
Did this get sent to Paul Sherwin?
Yep. There was one other comment that he made, that was made about, we were talking about, we had some staffing changes, and we had made a comment that we would try to reduce our budget or reduce our staffing through attrition, but we had a lot of people leaving, we felt like we weren't going to replace all of them.
Right, right.
So I just wanted to give you a staffing update of where we are with 2022, 23 budget versus what we budgeted, so in actual. So I kind of went back to last year, what we had presented in the budget over the past two school years. Okay, I just focus that, over the past two school years, the teaching staff has reduced by the equivalent of 1. full-time equivalent positions, that was leading into this year. This was, that was done through attrition, we had a retirement in 2020 and a teacher leave this district. So basically, position needs were reassessed and reassigned where possible, and it resulted in a reduction of a one full-time health position and one half-adapt counselor at a time. Coming into this year for the 22, 23 school year budget, we factored in a reduction of 0.5, half a teacher was factored in, and this was due to a retirement that was known by the district at the time, like last fall, we knew that we had a teacher retiring at the end of last year. And again, it was originally planned to reduce the budget by half of that position. But actually, what has happened this new school year is, the retired teacher position plan for half reduction was filled by a full-time equivalent. And this was due to the needs of the schedule and requirements in the music classes, because it was a music position. Additionally, the other certified music teacher picked up classes that were previously held by a teacher that's since left the district, previously held by the K connection technology yearbook teacher. So we reduced that position, we reduced the one middle, middle high school K connection technology yearbook teacher, and we filled those needs from positions with other teachers picking up that, so that the end teacher picked up the K connection piece. We had another high school teacher pick up the high school technology piece of that position. We had another teacher pick up the middle school technology piece, and we have another teacher covering the yearbook class. So we were able to cover, we were able to reduce that position by having different teachers pick up pieces of that position. And we additionally, we reduced one elementary school teacher. And our current configuration at the elementary schools now, we have two fourth grade teachers and one fifth grade teacher. Okay, so we only have, yeah, I thought it was two, three.
It's two fourths, I think.
Yeah. But they are, they have some.
Are all these scenarios, or is sharing responsibilities, is that ideal, or is that just?
But you give it to those who have interest in work, who have the knowledge in that area, and they have the time period for time to be able to do it. So if you have a teacher who's done four periods of day, and has a number of students in this one period that is available, and you have to go to the teacher, with the knowledge and experience in the area they are allowed, and will have to take on one subject. Out with the certification.
Is it sustainable? Is it sustainable? I mean, is it, is it a Band-Aid fix, or is it, you know, I know that there was some high school, people in middle high school that sort of stepped up because they wanted, I heard that as far as the technology was concerned, and some other communication, the K connections thing, that folks were interested in that and wanted to take that out.
These were, these were only, these were only given to those who were interested in, who requested some of this, who they were not ordered to do any of this type of thing. So, and some of that happened in the past.
So is that something at the end of the year, or let's see, there's a check-in to see, like, to see if it is sustainable?
Oh, no, we'll be doing that, we'll be doing that throughout the year, just to see how it's going, if they need support, and whatever. See if that works out.
And as we're heading into the next budget season, the administration has been talking, what is the configuration going to look like? Is it sustainable?
Yeah.
Do we need to add that?
I think it depends too, a lot on what the teachers want, you know, we get one that's really interested in doing something, then they try to tailor the schedule around that, so that teacher can continue to do it, if at all possible. So it depends on scheduling and if that kind of still, if they're still interested in doing it.
We still need more staff, correct?
Still need to, so.
We're a long time step on that, right?
Yeah, we have a lot, yeah, so basically, we, we had nine teachers leave this past year, and we replaced seven. So we're down to, we only budgeted to be down a half position, and we still currently find a deal position on the long-term side.
So we, I know we had budgeted to go down half a position, it sounds like we're now down two, four positions?
We're down, so we're down basically at one and a half of what we budgeted.
Yeah, so, so, so over the course of the last two years, though, we're now down three and a half.
Right, right. Is it sustainable?
Yeah. I know that the class has fluctuates in elementary school a lot, so.
You know, just looking at our enrollment this year, we, I don't think we lost any kids, because evidence, we've been on a downward trend.
Yeah.
I think we might be, last time I saw it, it was like maybe five above.
Oh, last five.
So that's, at least we didn't lose any, because that's where every year, the last ten years, it's been going down.
It's kind of exciting.
Yeah, it is.
It ends with win. Right.
Exactly, yeah.
Also, you know, that there's some, some housing issues in both towns that they.
Anyway, so that was just kind of giving you guys an update when the budget.
So, we also got this thing about the extraordinary needs grant, and it sounds like you guys are recommending we do not go forward with that.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Oh, that's on the agenda? Oh, okay, so that's not.
It's under board action.
Oh, let me just notch on ahead, then. So is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
And stuffy grant, super things, cool.
Okay. There was one question that did come up with Mr. Sherwin at, at the last meeting, and, or a couple minutes ago, regarding reading program for upper grades in middle high school. And in the upper grades, reading does look a little different than the, than the elementary. Three who are teaching kids how to learn, read, and in the upper grades, they're reading to learn. So it's a little bit different, the focus is a little bit different. Joe, if they need individualized programs for those kids who need the extra support, then they will get those individualized programs based on their needs. If the majority of students are able to read, to learn, then we will, you know, move forward and use different types of not specialized programs, but novels and those interests for the kids to keep connected. Same within that, that's when you really merge the different skills of the reading and the writing and the comprehension, you know, and the critical thinking and and the fluency, and those are the things that they're, they're monitored on. In all subject areas, you know, whether it be social studies, science, and English, like, we really do a lot of merging in, so that takes, that was what Mr. Prebenow. Just a reminder that we have a school board's goal meeting at this meeting. And committees, longest committee on the fatigue, so your minutes are in the board packet, and policy committee minutes are in there as well, which we reviewed at the last meeting. Your technology committee will be meeting on October 5th of 245. And professional development will be meeting on Thursday, November 15th of 245. And risk management will be scheduling the meeting soon, however, they meet on a quarterly basis anyway to the state. And the rest of the information, we can talk about this at the end of the agenda.
Is there any update from Mr. Prebenow?
Oh, yes. N W A testing has been completed, and the teachers have started to look at the student data. So what they'll start doing is looking at previous year's data in the spring, and look at the fall data, and see where they're, they're starting off, and then move forward from there. The N W A will also give them more detailed data as far as where the teachers need to guide the teachers, and what direction they need to go on. We teach the students based on assessment. Spare weekend pep rally, that might well, the teachers and students enjoy the things that they have to do during the week. But the middle high school evacuation laws, they've taken out, will be due to, we think the weather.
Has that been rescheduled?
I think that's been rescheduled, this Friday.
Right, okay. It's supposed to be beautiful in the valley, I saw that a little bit again, yeah.
In the enrollment numbers, again, it's 272. And so, let's see, we have teachers going to a national social studies conference in Philadelphia in December. Exciting, get to connect with other teachers around the country. So we'll be looking into a elementary Lego robotics club. And we'll use our title.
Do you need Legos? Is that a regular Lego thing, or is that a specific?
It's just kids.
Darn it, because I don't want a Lego to get it.
Okay, the rationale is there, it really does do a lot, it gets into the different modalities, and the students' learning, gets into the math, it's like the operation and communication. So a lot of different stuff, critical thinking. So very, been a fair enough question, it's a lot of things. And staff meeting we had today was based on the strategic plan, so all teachers, I broke up into groups, and we were reviewing the strategic plan, analyzing it, looking at what each step of the way looks like, and then what that's going to, how that's going to move forward. At the next meeting, they will now discuss it in their individual.
Okay.
So that was, that was very.
Right, committee reports. So we have a, 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 a minute from the update from the facilities committee.
Elementary heating system, everything should be online by October 7th. Warranty has been signed off on, but actually, they're just waiting on a few or two parts of it. Then everything looks good, so, I mean, well, the manufacturer's signed off on it, so. They did talk about the, you know, the controls, there'll be a training session that'll include the fire department and our new principal over here, and Mark, he'll be the controller of the system, well, Mark then. And then the fire department will sit in, they will do that, whatever the day is, the next level of teachers. High school heating design is still up for engineering, we just discussed that, and just to explain, my concerns are that it is a tight schedule, you know, so we basically have two months to have the engineering finished, which they say they're on task to do, and then get it out to bid and get numbers, because we'll build it up for.
The plan for, for it to be put on the warrant for this coming week.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy.
We need to, pretty much, to use, to use S R.
Yeah.
The cost of it.
Yeah.
So, the sooner we get that, of course, the better, but you know what, it is constructed a pretty short window to get a lot of information. They discussed the dugout fire, that's just sitting, waiting on insurance numbers, and, but Mark already has plans. We'll just sort of review what's the, you know, insurance companies, that's what they're going to give us for that. H P A C flooring, we discussed briefly, and I just asked that we tighten up, as soon as it better, know what we're going to do for flooring, so that we can pick what we're going to, say, cut out or add to, since, once again, it'll be a big year for orders with the heating system. That safety grant right now. That briefly, I guess, is about $100,000 per school, but they count the high school, the middle school, the elementary, so mostly you get 300,000. And there's been a few things that it's been already kind of planned to use on. Entries, windows, doors, general safety products that need to just be brought up to today's standard. And then down the road, just, we discussed some kind of remediation things, where they eventually want to tie both schools together, so it's just more sophisticated. A fault can be made from up here, and I didn't realize that box opener these days. It's a thing. The clocks are working at the same time.
It's all tied into that. Into common system here at the elementary, which got raided, I know.
When's the last time you wanted a clock? You just, you get in your car, sometimes, you walk down the street, sometimes it's 300 feet away from the building, and it tells that they can't keep the same clock. Paradox.
We tried to fit that into the safety plan. Exceed of the amount.
So that's not critical, but I guess it's more of a nuisance to the, to the faculty, because they'll go down from here, from what I gather, for lunch, but get down there, lunch isn't ready, because they think lunch is five minutes to now. Or you're five minutes late getting to it, but you weren't.
Can they wait forever?
Yeah.
As long as I can remember. Yeah.
But that's kind of it, unless anybody has a question, it was more just an update kind of meeting. There's, there's nothing big going on, except for figuring out these two projects, and that'll be the two big projects of the year, once again.
Yeah. It's grant on the path, but it's still a little more than Yes. But that's also a big problem for a lot of systems, too, so probably, probably not able to reuse the new products.
Well, that's, like, a lot of what we were talking about, it's like here, like, the duck work, a lot of the carrying system, we're able to be used, a lot of that's going to be used. So it's almost like a crap load. We did go through, I guess the last thing was, we always look at the C I P, and I just have a feeling that we get stuck on it. So I just had asked Mark to not give them more on his plate, essentially, but just to take the sheet that we have and just make hand notes, and then you can photocopy it, we can have photocopies, but then we don't have to go down the list. Sometimes it feels, it's a little bit, and just.
We look at that every.
We always have it out, but there's just so much to it, that sometimes it might just be.
Well, we still need to develop it.
Right, and that was just the base framework.
Oh, no, but we've always had a list, even before, even before the word C I P came around, we had this list. We've always had this, like, project, let's wish list, in process, you know, but you can go down it all the time.
Schedule a C I P meeting, so we can start the framework of funding some of these larger projects, like the roof that we're going to need in 20 years, or the parking lot that's going to be, need to be paved in a few years, or.
We can look at it in our goal sessions.
Developing the C I P, yeah, I've started working on a spreadsheet, but I don't have any figures, putting question marks in, and.
Once we get to the high school H VAC.
Guessing, using figures.
Money, wait for that.
The figure is right now.
We need the plan.
Right.
Need the plan.
Right.
Looking at is prioritizing the projects.
Right, I put in different scenarios, exactly, it's like the paving everything all at once, or doing the driveway, then the high school, then the elementary school in three different years, or something. And so, but if we sit down at a meeting, we can figure that out, how we want to.
We can prioritize, we still have to have a place.
Yeah, we have an estimate, yeah. Right, and, I mean, unfortunately, most of that's on Mark Hood, because he's the facilities manager, so he's the one that needs to come up with those.
I think he has a lot of those.
Estimate, yeah.
A lot of those numbers, though, can come from that, because we've done so many of these things recently, we could say, what was the cost of this building?
Exactly.
Project, we're just going to add 20% to it, and we're going to go down the line, how much is flooring per square foot, let's add 20%. We have a whole bunch of those projects that are partially completed, where we can just take the actual cost for one year, put a markup on it by square footage, which is square footage for flooring, heating systems, and have a, without having to get it hard for. Like, you mark them on, you have to do a square footage, get that there, and stuff like that.
Well, you just.
We don't need a bid, we just need to say, what's the square footage cost, what's the tonnage cost for asphalt?
And right now, it's like $10,000 last year.
We're not asking formal information, so what do you get, what is the ton of asphalt?
I think that you don't even, it doesn't, it's not even necessary to have specific numbers.
It doesn't depend.
Well, I mean, I think the idea is, though, we're not, these projects, some of these projects are 10, 15 years out, we're never going to have any idea about what that project is actually going to cost. And so as long as we have a ballpark number, and we can start putting money, it's a lot easier.
That's what I'm getting at, the ballpark.
Exactly.
100,000 or something.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that way, we're, but I mean, we don't need to add anything more specific than like.
A ballpark number.
Because it's.
But I don't know.
No, but you still need to ask, like, what is asphalt going for now? We can get a ball, we can create a ball.
We can create the ballpark number, but we need a base to go, I don't know if it costs 5,000 or 500,000 to pave that parking lot, or somewhere in between.
It's not 5,000.
We just need a somewhere in between. I mean, I guessed.
In front field, it's 5,000.
But anyway, I'd like to schedule a meeting, but we, we need some figures if we're going to do that, or maybe we can actually come up with some figures in the meeting.
We can sit next to the front cabinet, I can.
Exactly, exactly.
Because again, I don't.
And you can look at your calendar and see if there's a morning next week where you have an hour to spare, or the week after, or whatever.
The policies you're going on, to go to the first.
And that's all the ones that we have to pack in there.
Before we go to policies, the delegate assembly is this Saturday, would you all read your, your proposed resolutions? There's only 10 pages.
What's it say?
No. I mean, they're, for the most part, they are common sense, and you look at the ones that are recommended or not recommended, and it does, just kind of makes sense.
There's no.
No, there aren't, no, and even the continuing ones from last year, no branders as well, yeah. So I don't know how everybody feels about it, but I was just going to go with the recommendations of the N H S B A. So, I don't know how everybody feels about it, but I was just gonna go with the recommendations of the NHSA. Are you all comfortable with that? Thank you.
Is this Saturday, are you going to person?
Yes, yeah, it's eleven to one, it's only two hours, and then I get to go shopping, so it's all good.
Right.
Yeah.
Did, did, uh, you, Evan, wanna give us some update on the school funding meeting?
No, no, we can discuss it, it's, I mean, it's more now, I didn't bring those notes, do you have your notes with you? Do you remember what the proposal was, the Woodstock proposal is? Well, it says, Woodstock's proposal.
Well, I mean, we're in discussion, we had, we had one meeting.
Woodstock made a proposal, Lincoln made a proposal, we just, just decided to each look at those and weigh the ins and outs and come back next month and gather that.
There's a discussion around, you know, using, changing the formula to ADM, or to.
From a flat rate.
From a flat rate to.
To ADM and valuation.
Exercises being done to, I know with those numbers, yeah. We are necessarily pitching proposals here and there, but we are, we are looking at the numbers collectively, let's see how.
Well, I said proposal, because it says right on there, it starts with funding proposal. All right, it's, maybe the meetings are respectful and informative, and there's a lot of information, and, yeah. We, Lincoln has proposed to go back to, we had back to a fifty fifty, based on average daily membership and valuation attempts. So, Lincoln will always pay more, no matter what we do or don't do, but it's based on fifty fifty of the Lincoln's valuation and average daily membership and Woodstock's variation, average daily membership.
Well, so, okay, what Tammy's referring to is a document that, that was shared, and it was, it was sixty, we are right now at sixty five, thirty five, and the proposal is sixty eight, thirty two.
And like, the fifty fifty numbers for the last few years, if we had been doing the fifty fifty ADM valuation, I think the lowest was sixty two point something, and the highest around almost sixty four, so, I mean, is there not?
But again.
We're not, we're not talking like five and twenty.
Do we wanna get into these or not?
No.
They're, they're all pretty close, no matter what place like.
That's why we have a specific committee, that's right, this is why we're having, I think when we have to discuss it, we'll put it on the agenda and discuss it.
Yeah, because at some point, the committee comes back.
The committee will know.
They'll make a recommendation, either leave it the same or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, appreciate the efforts, I know, and I'll take a committee towards that, and that's a.
It has news.
Hotly, yeah, hotly contested. That brings Candy, so that.
Oh, there you go.
That helps, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's move on to, I'll pause us for bringing it up, and then we'll move on to the, the first readings of these policies. It looks like a lot of this stuff is, is the new statute step, and, and so, are we looking at just basically the updates from the School Board Association recommendations?
Yes, we did a couple of tweaking to, to meet the needs of this requirement.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'd customize it, yeah.
There's quite a bit of stuff, but I remember looking through that list of legislative changes, and there's a lot of legislative changes that we're gonna have. Is there, has there been any discussion at the, it's a little bit off topic, but at the student council level about how they're gonna go?
Yes, we're going through the process.
Yeah.
Excellent, we're going through the process, and by January, we will have a candidate that will be coming to me.
Excellent, is that the floor after the school funding?
I think we should call inside, I'm just kidding.
And then it looked like a lot of these things were just adding some references, special references and policy references.
On the policy.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I had a question about the B B. Yeah, school board, school board election.
Yep.
It says vacancies that occur before they search for a blah blah should be filled pursuant to board policy V B C. Then when you go to board, board policy V B C, it sends you to V V E, to fill that thing. So is it V V E that we actually have, or is it V B C?
And BBC's not one that we have here tonight, that's.
Yeah, it's not.
No, it is not, I looked it up.
Great question.
And it says board requests are responsible, blah blah blah, the board may plan appropriately fulfilling the vacancy board per board policy V V E, so then it sends you to V V E to actually do it.
Do any of them, that's the statute, there is a.
Yes. They do.
I mean, it, it really doesn't matter what we say or do, we have to follow the statute.
Yes, but it's, but in this, it says go to BBC, and you really, and BBC, it says board member vacancy should be filled in accordance with board policy V V E.
Did you bring up V V E?
Put, put it all off, and then we go to V V E, unexpired term fulfillment, and that's when it says. Then it goes into the authority to fill the vacancy there, and it goes by which school board, just from Lincoln, from Woodstock.
Well, that shouldn't matter, because we're all large members.
Well, but it specifically says that at V V E, and then if you can't decide, pick a number from there, it goes to the selection from that town.
That is correct.
And then if you can't go from there, the moderator.
The moderator, that is correct.
So that is a.
So.
That tracks the statute.
Correct, so should we modify it to say terms shall be filled pursuant to board policy V V E?
Yes.
Is it B B E or B B B E? B B's and an E.
I, I think that was.
So C should be modified to say E, B B B E.
So what's, sorry, I don't have a C in front of it, what is C, is there a reason why?
C set reference E.
Yeah, C sends you to E.
But is that all it does, or is there other information?
Court, uh, B B B C says filling of a vacancy upon resignation, board member vacancy should be filled in accordance with board policy V B.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's probably over there, thank you for noticing that.
So there's other reasons why, I, I guess the only issue is there's other reasons why they would be full vacancy other than a resignation. So.
Does it say specifically?
That one says resignation specifically.
Well, it says in accord before the expiration of the number still.
But does it say?
That one there says resignation.
This one says, you know, this is sort of like for all.
Yes, BBC.
There is no difference, I don't think, that way to deal with that.
But when you go into BBC, it says filling of a vacancy upon resignation, so this right here is sending you to just a resignation.
Yeah.
It sounds.
Anyone else have any comment on that?
I, I think if you put it on first reading, that would be okay, and then I'll.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And then before we approve it, prove it to second reading, we can just have that correction, thank you for.
It's on for first tonight, right, so we're moving into second.
We're gonna keep them on first reading, everything's first reading.
Yeah, we're making a motion to.
To move it to.
Move it to first reading, right?
First reading, yes, correct.
No.
It hasn't been on first.
We didn't send it to first reading.
They didn't present it last year.
We didn't.
Oh, so these are, I thought that were.
This is here for you guys to make your corrections, then it'll go to second reading, and then we'll approve it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, we, so, so we can move it to second reading with that correction.
Correct.
Tonight, that's what we're doing.
We're moving it to first reading.
First reading, this is the first time with public proceedings and the board, because the committee.
Am I mistaken in that, it usually goes, when it comes to us in this form, that is first reading, and then we make corrections, and then it comes back to us as second reading, and then at second reading, if there's no more correction, we approve it. It's a two-step, it's not a three-step, it's not like we're voting to put it on for first, and then we vote to put it in second, and then we vote to approve it.
You're just saying.
So, so it's on for first reading now, we make this correction, comes back to us at second reading.
With the correction.
With the correction, and then if we like what it says, then we approve it.
Yes.
Okay, so we can move it to second reading. I, I was on the policy committee for a while, I thought maybe I.
Well, I was thinking it, I just wasn't saying it.
That's, all right, any other?
Well, I got chewed out while I was up there approving, about how that all worked, but some of the work, that's why I looked at that.
Any other comments on any of the other first reading policies? Then, I will, yeah, you want to make it?
I will make a motion to move policies B B B, B B B F, E B H, D F G A, E B B, E B B D, E E A, E H B, I H B A, I H B G, I M B A, J F A M, J J A, J J J, J J J dash R, J L C P, J L C B dash R, J L C B A, J L D B B to second reading.
Thank you, Joe, all those favorites, if I was saying aye.
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 Yeah.
Extensions.
All checks, the motion carries.
Wait a minute.
Dash all.
Yeah.
They are moved.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, next is. Well, we do that once a week.
After it's approved, yeah, we gotta approve the other one before we can withdraw, withdraw that one.
Yeah.
It's a replacement one, so.
All right. Stat nominations, recommendations, resignations?
Yes, I have a recommendation for Ms. Phoebe Hamory. P J M O R I, as a.
Is she in the middle, high school, or elementary?
Elementary.
Nice, I'm making a motion to approve Phoebe Hamory for an elementary professional.
Was it Phoebe?
Phoebe.
Phoebe, I have a second.
Hamory, right, H A M O R I, oh, yeah.
Hamory. Why or not?
That's good. Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe, a little discussion on that recommendation. All those are favorites, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Those, extensions, motion carries.
Now, I know we were down quite a few, um, par professionals, how many are we still down? Was it three last time, so we're still down by two?
We're still down by two. I was, yeah, right now, and it could still be three, you know, it's.
Gotcha.
Just some of the different, different words.
Um, and I think we need a, a motion to, uh, retain the two point five percent fund balance, right, that's not, I see that on the agenda, that was something we talked about last time. And this is what we, this is sort of what we've been doing.
We've been doing it since two thousand thirteen, when the district voted to leave, to retain that two point five percent of the unexpendable funds for emergency purposes, and therefore, so any monies we have left over from this year, we, we set it aside, we don't spend it, it goes back in surplus next year, and it starts again. But then we don't have that special meeting that we need, that we have in emergency.
And, and this is a, a non-accumulative.
Right, it goes back in surplus.
And then, if my memory serves me, this is the funding that if we need to use it, we actually have to get Department of Education approval.
Yeah, but we, yes, we have to get approval, but we don't have a special.
Right, but, but it's not, it's not, you know, at the level of even the school boards, it's.
Right.
The motion is right there on that.
Yeah.
At least that figured, you know? We won't know until you have the fund balance.
Well, we've been kind of keeping it consistent at a hundred and fifty thousand, it's up to two and a half percent of the. Balance for this year. It's probably closer to like one eighty.
And that doesn't take away from the hundred that we've only put into?
No, it's, no, no, it's okay. That, that we actually moved and put into the trust funds.
Gotcha. So.
That'd be a great idea.
I'll accept the motion to make, to retain a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the assigned fund balance for this year, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Some of it.
Thank you, thank you, Joe, any further discussion on that? And favorites, if I was saying aye. Proposed, extensions, and that was first.
Have we ever had to use that?
We have not.
It's good to have, but that's, now, that is something, well, yeah, no kidding, that is something we could use if, well, no, I'm just, I was trying to, if, we had another, um, four special ed students who were with the large needs, they could use that.
Or facility or route, because you, or something major that.
Yeah.
When we have our trust funds, that, of course.
Right, right.
You know, and that's what they would probably look at first, but beyond that, it goes beyond that.
Back up to back up. All right, extraordinary needs grant, you know, that came up in the sign, the stuff that we got. Was that the recommendation of the, of the district's attorney, and, and it shows that it's not really worth the, the work that it would be for. Do we need to take any action on that?
Uh, yes, we would not do it, it was, I'm just gonna. Um, the S B four twenty, it was passed like in June of two thousand twenty one, and the bill is supposed to be a part of the act, because it's a canceling budget process, and it wasn't able to get merged into the budget process after all schools, and they held their meetings for the twenty twenty first school year, and all the foundations had been approved by voters. The acceptance of these funds are coming as a one-time grant next year, and I'm just saying that. So the district will need to decide if they want to accept the funds as a grant or opt out of this year, and next year, the money will be included in the adequacy calculation, so. As originally intended, each district that qualifies for the extraordinary needs grant must submit an accountability claim by January ninth, two thousand twenty three. Even if the district opts out of the grant for this year, they still qualify for the months later, if the district chooses to accept the extraordinary needs grant at this turn, they need to file the RSA when I said, old three H, and old special meeting. The amount calculated by district is in ninety seven eighty eight, and after discussing the possible uses of it, you know, and it turned, um, it was recommended to opt out with the grant, however, even to opt out, we must file a required report to the Department of Ed on September third, twenty twenty two. We also will still have to write the plan by January.
Well, if we have to write the plan anyway, what, what is the downside of accepting the money, what is, what else needs to be done to accept it?
Especially district meeting.
Yeah, you have to have a formal district meeting, you have to bring in our white strippers, you have to bring in your attorney.
That's right, too.
You don't use.
Nine seventy dollars.
That's right, too, I remember that right now.
But this is, again, the timing of it all is.
Yeah.
It's actually setting season two.
So I will make a motion to opt out of the S B four twenty extraordinary needs grant.
Yeah, it's a motion to opt out.
It's a motion to opt out. Oh, I see, you wanted a four motion, so I'll, I'll, we need to vote it down, I get what you're saying, so I'll make a motion to accept the S B four twenty extraordinary needs grant. Okay? But now say all favor, nobody's gonna say yes.
Oh, I guess, I mean, it's no, no further discussion, I think this was to, I'm not sure of the way it works, but, all those are favors, if I was saying aye. Proposed.
Yay.
Extentions, and that motion is.
Positive.
Okay, just have. All right, and, uh, new business, I saw, um, in the. Report, you know, there was some discussion last year about funding the field trips and student. Yeah, there was some question about whether or not, you know, how much we were asking that students or parents will participate. And I think the question is basically, as we go forward in the budget season, you know, what does the board want, and the institutions to prepare for that.
Right, because when we, we will be giving out the, the information to the, or the information to the teachers in October, and usually say, okay, you can do this, so much for field trips, so much, but da da da.
Yeah.
So, that's an issue, that's an issue.
Do, do we have any sense of like? Do we have any sense of like, you know, how much money is taken in by the district in terms of future?
Everyone is different and all. Some of them don't require admission fee. We pay for the transportation. That's probably the biggest reason. Some of them don't require, we have to go back.
Some of them are half, some of them are partial.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering like, you know, if, if the school's taking in a thousand dollars a year in field trip fees, then, you know, I think that, that the district would certainly support. That, you know, people would certainly support us covering that. If they're taking in $15,000 of field trip fees, which.
It was a nominal amount. I did remember doing the math for just three of the classes because that's all I had the information on, on the ones my grandkids went last year. And it was those three was, it was like, I want to say 700 or something. I don't have those notes in front of me. They're in the minutes whenever we had that discussion. It was definitely less than a thousand.
Certainly changes by.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the issue I had with it was, I mean, one of them was $5, one was seven. I forget what the other one was. It's not much. I think one of them was even $3. It wasn't a huge amount. It was more of an accountability fee. It, I know absolutely positively, there were two children in a class that did not go because their parents did not have the money and they were too proud to ask. They said, we're not taking handouts. I, I also know that the money could have been there from the parents. It was a priority and it definitely wasn't. So the only one that suffered were those two kids. There's those two kids. Absolutely. And every, every field trip that my kids ever went on, every field trip that the grandkids went, because my kids do the same thing, we always sent in an extra. You know, the field trip was five, we sent 10. Use this on somebody or something or donate it or whatever. And it just, there were kids that didn't go because the parents didn't want to contribute five bucks. Or, or couldn't, I mean, maybe there was a legitimate, I don't have the $7, whatever. Yeah. And, and that should not happen. And it's, it's the kids that, it's not my grandkids. It's not your kids. It's not your kids. It's the kids that, the unfortunate kids that don't. Have the amount of support that my kids and your kids do, that get penalized with having this accountability fee. That's all.
We're aware that, but we were aware that PTSA in the past has contributed if there was a student that didn't have that.
Which is.
We were not aware of it.
Which, I mean, there's a million people that are going to throw them 10 bucks in the pot. I know that. But if you send this home saying, on Tuesday is a field trip and you get us ring five bucks and they keep the kid home that day. And the kid doesn't go because they're not asking for the money. That's what happened. And it wasn't that, you know, any of us that would have paid the teacher would. I mean, I don't think there's a teacher at the school that would have thrown 10 bucks at, it's that they just don't send them.
But on the, on the other hand, if we say we're going to fund it, now they're going to start going to Europe and everywhere else. That's just not this big a problem. Should we, should we cap it off?
They still have to be approved, correct?
Field trips are approved.
They still have to.
Yeah, I'm kidding. I just mean. Yeah, but they can.
And if you do have a field trip to Europe, I, I want to check on that one.
No, I mean, but they can, is there a cap of how much that the board of the district should be responsible to pay?
That would be up to pay.
Well, I mean, all of the field trips have. It's crucial. So we are, we are supporting their education outside of the school. And it's me.
I'm not against it. Of course.
I'm, I'm in full support of, well, again, if it's 15,000, it's, it's a different question, but if it's $2,000.
Of course.
I don't know, right? I, I think it, that it probably makes sense. It sounds like there's support from the board on the issue to plan to cover that. I mean, I, you, you'll obviously be able to get the number of like, how much money the school, the students take in. And then, you know, if we get that budget, we're going to be looking it over. We'll see that number and we can, you know, we can have a discussion about it at that point. And then, you know, then it'll be, if there's a question, they'll be able to decide if we would like to support that separately. But we should, I think it makes sense to plan, put it in the budget as we're going to cover field trip fees. Just so that we, at least then we can have a more informed discussion about it.
It would be good to look at it too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that too.
Yeah. If it's too much, you know, we'd look at it, okay, with something else.
And totally accepting the senior trip. That's not, that's a different animal. Yeah. And if you do, there's a, according to Mark's notes, yeah, there's 111 middle school students. If you give five bucks a student, that's what, $555. So we're not talking millions here. I don't know what, is a middle school still go to Vermont?
No, I mean, they do a different trip to Vermont. I know. My kids were in eighth grade. I remember giving them 30 bucks.
Yeah. But they were gone for five days too. I mean, I don't pay 10 times that for a middle schooler. Get rid of my eighth grader for 30 bucks? Heck, yeah.
But what, what we ask the teachers, when they submit their budget to the last for a breakdown of, you know, what's the transportation? We give them guidelines on that. What's the admission fee? What's, you know, so we have that. So we have to change anything.
And they, did they normally have a sense of like what the student contribution was expected to be for some of this?
Well, yes. Yeah. Usually it would go towards the admission.
I think the rule of thumb is half of the admission cost and they get the group rate. So it's always.
Some of them, like you said, are three bucks, some are five bucks.
Exactly. Yeah.
So I guess, does anyone have a problem with it? It's just putting it on, like, working it into the budget at this point.
Yeah.
Anything in community business needs a discussion?
Nothing.
And students, we have Miss Teen here.
Yeah. Hi. I have internet, so. I only had one submission from Dory Weeden that the ELA program has a new electrical internship with Saborn Electric. And currently have two seniors that are attending three days a week. Special thanks to Thomas Saborn for supporting our ELA program.
It's been funny work for us, kids. And.
Yeah, have them come fix this light. That's a good idea.
The clock is seizing because of the light.
You know, that is really a fantastic, fantastic program. The amount of kids that I was thinking about that have brought to that and continued in those fields that, I mean, from way back too.
It also, like, there's a huge benefit to having students in the face of the community who's like disabled. So that's why.
And it's true. There was one student that went to, I don't know where, but realized she did not want to do that. And moved to something else. So beneficial that way as well.
All right. I don't see any community. So, uh, I think we need to have a, I don't know if this is not public necessarily. Well, there's one other thing before we start on the strategic plan, that I think it's the executive section.
It does. But do you want to do that after the board, the goal setting? So we're going to have to kick everybody out.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, we'll do that. Yeah, well, let's, uh, we're going to adjourn, adjourn this meeting because it's just a work session. So I accept a motion to adjourn.
Second. That's a motion.
Thank you. Favor?
Aye.
So the school meeting is adjourned.